Meeting is live now.
I call the Maplewood City Council Work Session for July 6, 2021 to order. Mr. Jackson, yes?
Yes, Mayor Canapler. Councilmember Crossley.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Falkingham. I think Sean's on mute, but I see he's here.
I'm here, sorry, yes.
Thank you, Sean. Mayor Canapler, a quorum is present.
Thank you. All right, item number three, Human Services Commission Ordinance Review. So I just want to give a reminder to my colleagues that on May 11, during a city council meeting, I proposed creating a Human Services Commission to serve the residents of Maplewood. And during that meeting, I provided you all with like this ecosystem that was like supposed to support our residents. And then I got some feedback from Councilmember Crossley and Falkingham. And those council members had asked that the ordinance not prohibit people that didn't live in Maplewood to not be on this commission. And so that is included in the ordinance. But we're here to talk about the ordinance, what you like, what you would like for all of us to reconsider. So if there are any concerns about that, please be sure to, you know, voice them. I will tell you that there is a section in the ordinance. It's the second whereas. So that is what we will definitely need to discuss today. And then there's an addition that I would like to see. And that is the inclusion of moderate income to Section 2-400, Creation of Commission Powers and Duties. Right now it says to assist like low-income families, but I'd like to add moderate income to that as well. So I know I've kind of gone through a lot pretty quickly. Just open the floor for any questions or discussions on this.
I think this looks really awesome. I think the scope is ambitious, but I don't mean that in a bad way. I mean that in a broad way. My only edit is that on page, at the top of page three, it says that at least three members shall be qualified voters and residents of the city of Maplewood. Could we just change that to residents? I'm not sure being a registered voter is a requirement of other boards and commissions. And I just think it's broader.
I am.
Councilmember Crossley.
Sweet.
Yeah, I had the same.
Okay. As for the second whereas, I hadn't thought about like how much content we needed to include there. I think if we just needed, are you looking for like a half sentence or like a couple of sentences?
I, I'm looking for a pretty bold statement. I'm just going to be honest with you all. My, my vision, when I proposed this to you all and I was like, you know, working on the proposal, was really like this commission is to assist our residents to push back on any negative effects that low and moderate income residents are feeling from gentrification. And so I definitely would like for that to have a statement that is bold, but also comes across well. And so that's why that's kind of what I'm looking for. It could be one sentence, but really it's just like to counter, to try to assist in countering the effects of gentrification in our community. So members can, that, that are here can stay here.
Yeah, and I just saw in the news today that the median cost of a home in St. Louis went up by $50,000, which is
Woo!
I would agree.
Yeah, I wanted to include that moderate.
Yeah, yeah. Can I ask, so I, I do like the opportunity to have some non-residents. I guess my question for Sean, our councilmembers Crossley and Falkingham, it seems like, you know, we've left it open to it being a majority non-resident. Was that your intent? Or, you know, what were your guys' thoughts on that?
Um, I'm not opposed to either way, but my thought was that with Maplewood being a relatively small community with a relatively complex need, it might be helpful for us to have an avenue to solicit like professionals or advocates that don't, that aren't necessarily like residents of Maplewood, but have a professional or personal investment in the, in the services and the scope of this commission. So I don't know that it necessarily hurts the commission if it's a majority not Maplewood. Like this isn't, this isn't a hill that I'm like super passionate about. I just, I like the avenue of having access to other professionals.
I agree. I mean, I think that's important. I think it's almost necessary in what the group is trying to accomplish. But I guess it doesn't describe who the non-residents would be. So I'm curious, would it make sense to provide some loose parameters on that or no? What do people think? Just like that it will be professionals who are engaged, you know, who can, you know what I'm saying, instead of just not saying anything?
Well, I feel like we can always get professionals. I mean, just because they're not on our commission, you know, we do that all the time. We're always reaching out to professionals, you know. So I, I really don't like the idea that most of them are not residents. That's just my personal, because all of the regular commissions and boards, they all, you know, they're all Maplewood residents. I think they do a great job of being professionals and reaching out. And so I don't know why we need to, but I'm okay with it. It's just, why do we have to have most of them not being, you know, residents? And I agree with Jenny. I don't, it doesn't say, they could be anybody that doesn't, you know, I just, I don't know. There's no parameters there. About who the non-residents would be.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, when you design a a commission like this, I mean, it says at least three. And I would imagine that our current mayor and mayors in the future will pick people who are dedicated to making this happen. You know, regardless of whether they're a, you know, Maplewood citizen or it could be all nine as Maplewood citizens. Maybe they're, we, it's deep enough that we have plenty of people. But in the case that we don't, it is nice to have that. You know, if, if people do this kind of thing for a living and they want to be a part of, you know, you know, our, our commission, that would be great. I mean, I do like at least three. You know, I could, I don't know if it has to be a majority, but, but I'm not opposed to that. But, but I do like it open because it's, you know, no one's going to want to be on here or appointed and then voted by the council. That doesn't have, you know, the right intent. And, 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 you know, at least some either qualification and/or ability to help in a positive way. I mean, we still have to, we still have to elect them so we can, you know, we can kind of play it by ear, so to speak. So I mean, I like the wording as it is.
So you, you would not be in favor of adding some sort of language that the other non-residents, some sort of loose language that they're?
I mean, but what do you, I mean, when you start to put language in like that, you, you begin to narrow your focus. And I, I don't know if, if we put in language, even if it was loose, like maybe they have experience with, you know, nonprofits, you know, food pantries or, you know, whatever the case may be. I think you're leaving people out that may not have the exact experience, but, but experience and other things too as well. You know, in order to figure out what, what we need to adequately meet, you know, low and moderate income classes. So I think, I think it would just be up to the council, just to, you know, collaborative, like, you know, hey, great, we got all these applications. And look at these four people there, you know, they're part of nonprofits that do this kind of thing. You know, daily basis, great, let's, let's put them on. I mean, I guess you could put language in there, but I, I would just hate to limit it.
It's not, and it's not to the, the type of job they have or anything. It's just that they have experience that is somehow directly related to the goal of the commission. I understand, I think the opposite can happen too, when you leave it so open, then it, you know, this is not like, I'm not, this is not make it or break it. I just, you know, was noting that, that was sort of like a glaring, like there's most of the commission is made up of people that aren't really defined and the potential problems that could cause down the road with, you know, groups that's other than us, right? Because this is going to last beyond us, but.
I, you know what, I, maybe what you could put in there is that, you know, with a minimum of three members from the, or three, minimum of three members from the city of Maplewood. And then you could put, and and any other members, we would prefer to have some experience. You know, using the word prefer would, would imply that, yeah, we're looking for people with experience here, but we're not completely eliminating it. So, I mean, something like that, I'd be, I'd be hip for.
There is some language that, that kind of indicates that in the beginning, that selection of members will be made so as to encourage representation of individuals with an interest in and understanding of human services. So that sentence is in there, but I wanted to point out something that I thought that we had discussed, that we were going to include representatives potentially from either public safety or staff. And there's a specific sentence in here that it says that they will not be a paid employee.
Yeah.
I will ask Jackie about that, because now that you're asking or bringing that up, I see, I see that point of view. When I read it, it, okay, so let me back up. So Jackie used the city of Columbia, Missouri's ordinance for a roadmap for ours. And so when you look at their ordinance, it basically says that members on their commission will not be paid, right? And so when I saw that, I was just going back to, oh, this is the ordinance that, you know, Jackie was using as a roadmap. So this is what she's talking about. What I will do is just circle back and forgive me for, for the community that's watching Jackie is Attorney Graves. I will circle back with her and talk to her about that. Because I think we definitely need to have a representative from public safety or our Maplewood Police Department. And I'm going to be honest with you all, I have a particular person in mind. So yes, I think that we can work that out. Thank you for bringing that up. I'll make sure that's clear.
If it's more palatable, I think something that could be potential or a potential avenue is having certain staff that need to be involved in this, serving as ex officio. So while they're, just tossing out some language here, I'm not sold on this idea, but you know, the police chief or their designee shall serve in an ex officio capacity and, and shall be present at these meetings. That, that might be something where we sort of codify their participation. So that might be an option.
The ex officio would be much preferred. You wouldn't want a staff member as an actual member. But a lot of cities pay boards and commission members. That's also a possibility, what, what they were referring to. But I don't, there, there would be no problem for a staff member to be an ex officio or basically be a staff liaison or in attendance. They're in a lot, you know, they're in other boards and commissions. So that, that really shouldn't be a problem. We could tweak that language that Sandy pointed out, just to make sure that's clear. And we could put in a member from public safety. We can just leave it generic if you want. And then that way, you know, you never know what, what personnel changes if you put a title in there. Maybe the person that comes in next may not be the person who has the most knowledge. So you just keep it a little bit more generic. I heard public safety, is there, is there another person that the council would like to see or another position, I guess is a good way to look at it?
Yes, when I was, when I was thinking about this, I, I also had in mind having a representative from MRH, at least giving this invitation for them to be a part of this commission as well. And so in my mind, that was not a part, well, I, no, that really wasn't a part of the nine. And so I do like Councilmember Crossley's idea about like the ex officio capacity. And I'm wondering if we can do that for MRH as well.
We can, we can definitely do that.
I had just a couple of other questions. The first one, which is a touchy subject right now, but so it says appointed by the mayor and city council, which is different, right? Like, and some of our ordinances do say that, like the Parks Board one says, appointed by the mayor and council or just appointed. Feel like it would be helpful if there was consistency in all of them. So should that say to consistent with our other one? Should it read appointed by the mayor with the approval of the council, like the other ones read? Or was the intent for it to be all of us to do it together?
I think the intent was to make, well, I don't know what the intent was, because I'm not Attorney Graves.
I guess Jenny, that's
So.
It would be much, much more consistent to say appointed by the mayor with the advice or with, basically with the approval of the city council.
Yes.
Because there's two others that do that too, which is the Parks Board. And like, I think the Civil Service Commission, it would make sense if they were all consistent, you know, so that.
We can make sure that that's like review, when we do the overall review of all these orders.
Right.
But we're going to create one, we may as well do the language we want. So that's a very good catch. I'll make sure we get that in there.
And I guess the other thing that's along those same lines is making the effective dates the same as the other ones. It would be the only board and commission that has a different one. So I guess to me, it would make sense to do the June, the July, to, you know, whatever, like the rest. And then it says at the end of that paragraph, appointments to fill vacancies shall be on expired terms only. Does that mean the, the members themselves will fill see that's in an unexpired term? I'm not, there was some confusion between that for me.
What section are you on, Councilmember Schmidt?
Oh, it's that same section. It's 2401, the last sentence. So and maybe I'm just not reading it right. Three, you know, then it just says, appointments to fill vacancies shall be unexpired terms only.
So I think that means that if you technically vacate your position once the term has been expired, then it's not an appointment of a vacancy. It's just a regular appointment. But if somebody quits in the middle of their term, that's a vacancy.
Okay. Okay. And then my, my, my last question, sorry, was on the next section. And it says, you know, it does say like absences need to be excused, but then it says, any member who is absent for three consecutive regular meetings shall automatically forfeit the. And is that even with excused absences or unexcused? Or what are people's thoughts on that?
I, I, okay. To address your, your question, which I think is a good point, I think it needs to be clear that it's unexcused. When I looked at it, I just, in my mind, assumed it was unexcused. But to your question slash point, it needs to be stated.
Okay, I would agree with that. Sometimes things come up for people and we should give them a benefit, that sometimes they're going to have to miss stuff, so.
Cool. Okay. So.
If you'd like, Mayor, I could, oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, I didn't know you were speaking.
You're all right. So I, I, I gathered that you were taking notes and you're going to communicate with Attorney Graves. And then I am.
I'll take it and I'll make a new draft and then I'll send it out to the council to make sure we're okay. And then I'll send, we can go ahead and move forward. There's nothing in here that I'm concerned about with any of the changes that would require paying legal counsel.
I will tell you, I, I spoke with Attorney Graves and I told her, once we got the statement together, that's at the beginning of this ordinance, I would circle back and present it to her. Because I want to make sure that we are not going to say something that would cause us to be liable for anything in the future. I actually learned that when I was serving on the school board. I, I did some language that was real, like in your face. And thankfully, my colleagues there were like, yeah, let's take this to the attorney and make sure it's okay. And it needed to be, it needed to be toned down. And so I want to make sure that, that we go through that process here. Because I don't want to put our city in dire straits when really the focus is just to help.
Um, yeah, so figuring out the original gap that we wanted to talk about. I'm I'm wondering if there's language from that resolution we did a few months ago that we could just copy. All about not having to duplicate work if we don't have to.
Did you all talk about gentrification in that resolution? Are we talking about the equity resolution?
No, it didn't explicitly call out gentrification. I think it only explicitly called out systemic racism and police brutality. But yeah, that's a good point.
I don't, I don't think that it'll, I don't think it'll be difficult. I think it's, I think it is a good idea to take a look at that resolution and see if we can, you know, draw from it. And then also let you all know, Mark is Goldenberg from SLU or of SLU is also working on this as well. So I'll see what ideas he has and we can, we can talk about it a bit more. So I think this is probably the only part. And then I guess I want to make sure before we move on from this, like, where, where are we standing on the three people?
I mean, Sandy made a point about that language in the beginning, I guess. You know, but we've clearly recently had a conversation about, you know, sort of our ordinances, not laying stuff out. I mean, I guess if people don't really care, we can try it. And if we run into problems, we can narrow, I don't know.
I'm in favor of beefing it up a little bit. But Sean, maybe since your concern was that we go too far, you know, we, we propose something via email and see, you know, get the.
Does, does anyone know if the Columbia one had anything like that? Did they similarly have?
See a copy of the Columbia one?
I don't think so. I didn't have time to look it up either.
I think I just provided a link to that in May, but that was it. Like in that proposal, May 11th, I provided a link to it, but that was it.
Maybe it's, maybe there's something in there, you know?
Yeah.
We can look, I can look at that tomorrow, something.
All right. So Councilmember Phillips, when you say beef it up a bit, what do you mean?
Um, I mean, to, to expand on that, that statement about, you know, in, use something other than encourage or to maybe be a little bit more specific about the type of experience that we're looking for. So I, I don't know what that looks like until I see it. I'm great at editing, not great at creating, so.
Okay. Well, then it looks like we, we really just have two things that we'll probably work on a bit more. And the first one is that input at the beginning. And then the second is what we're discussing right now about like beefing up that section. Is that right? Okay, all right. All right, any additional discussion on item three before we move on? All right, thank you all. Okay, item four, RFP for capacity building social and racial equity. I'll just open that up for discussion.
Yeah, so I think I had a question about, and I know in this meeting, we're not scoring these RFPs, but, or these responses to the RFP. But I was wondering if we had a scoring matrix already in mind, if that was something that was built into the RFP? And if not, if that maybe is a place for us to start before we get into any comments about the specific proposals?
Well, I was thinking that we are, that would, the original evaluation criteria that we set out is what I use to score. Now, if that's not what I'm supposed to be using, then somebody better tell me so I can re-score, because I have done, I've already done that part.
I believe the criteria was on the last page of the request for proposals. I know Councilmember Schmidt tweaked that language quite a bit there towards the end. And I think everyone agreed to it.
It's where.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think I touched the scoring matrix, but the stuff, but yes, it's there. It tells you the criterion and how many points they are.
So so would it make sense then, just for like scheduling wise, for us to have this on the agenda in a formal council meeting so we can share our scores? And then I'm just trying to like set a due date.
Yeah, we definitely need a due date.
So speaking of due dates, I would like to propose that whatever the due day is, it is after our city manager starts. Okay, all right, good. So I really just want to, I want to make sure he is a part of this process. He has a voice in this process. We can collaborate with him on this, okay?
That was my first comment, so I'm with you there.
All right. So yeah, so I mean, outside of that, I'm, I'm fine. Yeah.
Originally, we said, I wrote it on my calendar, that the ranking was due on July 13th. But does anyone else remember that? The next council meeting, which we, that's what we said originally. No, that's not.
I don't, I think maybe that was thrown out as a suggestion. Talk about it tonight. I guess to go along with what Mayor Canapler said, I guess my other thing I noted in going through these is like, a large part of it is sometimes like going through like what your vision is or what your goals are or whatever. And we haven't quite have done that. So I guess for me too, I was not in a hurry to begin this process because it seemed to be somewhat a waste of money to do it before we even know what, what those things are. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. And I just wanted to clarify, because I did write it down. Maybe we just talked about it and I was thinking, oh, I gotta, you know, do that. So I'll just take that right off. That's what I wanted to.
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like we're talking about a work session. And Michael's starting, he'll be at the first council meeting in August, which I'm sorry, I'm scrolling through my calendar. So Michael will be here.
August.
It's August 9th, so he'll be here for the, the 10th meeting. So, I mean, I'm assuming everyone probably wants to have it on the 17th or sometime thereafter.
We do, I don't know if it would make sense to do the last meeting in August. Just so he's got maybe a minute to breathe. So for everyone.
Whatever.
Okay, these proposals are good for 90 days or something like that. So we're not in danger of them expiring and no longer being valid if we wait a minute to score and certify it.
No problem. I'll make sure to let the firms know that, that we'll be hearing it sometime. I'll just leave them, leave it at some time in August for now, at least to give the firms an update.
I just noted that the very first one, the kaleidoscope, was dated on June 15th. So I'm, I'm looking for a date on the others and not necessarily seeing a specific date. So just to keep in mind, if they're, if they're valid for 90 days, I guess we do potentially have. A specific date, so just to keep in mind if they're, if they're valid for 90 days, um, I guess we do potentially have a ticking clock.
Who would imagine if we're not far out, outside of it, they'd probably still honor the same, but.
Yeah, Anthony, uh, can you just reach out to them and say, hey, we just got a new city manager, we're waiting for it? Are these gonna be, are these quotes still good through the end of August before we make a decision on them?
Absolutely. 90 days have put us in September though.
Yeah.
It would maybe be the end of September because I think we would then also maybe interview them, so we would have to factor.
I'll let them know that the council's gonna, is, 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 done a preliminary review. And they're gonna more, do a more detailed review once the new city manager starts. I'll just say mid-August. I anticipate the end of August is when they'll, uh. Finalize the scoring and then we'll start the interview process, which I anticipate will go through September. Are you guys okay with that schedule and I'll get that via email? Make sure all three are. I'm sure they will be as well, but I'll get that in writing.
Sounds good to me.
Alright, any further discussion on item number four? Okay. Moving on to item number five, SLU Institute for Healing Injustice. Uh, slash Government Alliance on Race and Equity, so. Excuse me, I also, um, sent you all information about, um, GARE, which is the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. Um, I believe I did that in May, but then I also sent you recently a, um, PDF document from GARE. And it's 88 pages long, but I was trying to make it easy and I was like, look at page four and five. Because that's what's telling you, um, more information about, uh, what GARE is and what GARE does. And so essentially, GARE is an organization that is made up of governmental entities. And they work in partnership with one another to work on, um. Racial equity. And the SLU's Institute for Healing Injustice had, um, mentioned this to Councilmember Schmidt and I some months ago. And so I kind of followed up, um, on that and getting some more research. Right now, there, there are only, I want to say, two members of GARE in the state, uh, and I know off the top of my head, one is Kate Gerardo. Um, and I don't, I don't know if other, you know, municipalities or other government entities know about this. Um, so I'm glad that we learned about it from SLU. I do think that it would be beneficial for us to be members of GARE. Um, and I will tell you all that the membership fee is, uh, $2,000. Um, so I just wanted to talk with you all about that. I just really think it's a good idea to have a partnership. With other governments, uh, agencies or entities. Um, because then you can, you can talk with folks that are working in the same capacity as, you know, we all are. So I just wanted to know your, your thoughts on that as well.
So I, I, I didn't have time to read it in detail and I tried to skim through it, but could you explain if. A little bit like about what that looks like, like what does that partnership look like?
So they have like trainings, right?
Okay.
And it'll only be for people that are, that are members of GARE and of course you need to be a part of some type of government entity. Um, and so in these trainings, they are. Explaining how you communicate with your community about the work that you're doing. How you communicate with, uh, city staff about the work that you're doing or, or staff that's in your department. And then it's also talking about how you go about creating policies and implementing them. And so with this partnership, when you have these questions, you go to. Members in GARE and you say, hey, we're, so we're working on this, like what tools do you all have? Or what have you used? What works best? And then they respond to you, so.
I think that would make sense because in looking through. Equity proposals, it seems like if we can, the ones we could afford are, you know, even, but a lot of them. Require you to do a lot of the work, which makes sense. And that this would be a good tool to have or a good resource to have, like. Combined to, to work through that process, so I mean. It seems like it would be worthwhile to me.
Cool. Yeah, I did look up some of it. Of course, I didn't read all 88 pages. But I did go over some of it and some of the stuff that we had received before. It really looks like it's really helpful. It would really be helpful. I really liked it. You know, the way they had it set up, it looked like it would be easy to, to work through, so.
I agree. I went through most of their website and, uh. You know, when you become a member to access, you know, the tools that you have access to and some of the training you have access to, I think is. And even they clearly say, you know, it's just one part of, 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 you know, your, um. Uh, of your journey, you know, with this, so it would probably go really well with an R, you know, with a company that we're looking at. You know, to help guide us and, um, it looks like there's some. Uh, there are big, small, there are all different types of cities also that belong to it as well, so. But yeah. You know, maybe once we join a bunch of other of the smaller municipalities here in St. Louis, well, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll hop on board and, uh. Uh, to be much more effective for everybody that way too.
The, um, the NLC training that I attended, um, way back in 19 at the City Summit. Um, they definitely, uh, under the, um, racial and equity leadership program, they definitely recommended membership in GARE. Um, and there were member cities, uh, that were in attendance at that, at that training, so, um, I'm strongly in support of joining.
Yeah, same here.
Great. So then I guess my, my question, um, Mr. Traxler would be next steps. I would assume it would just be like, you know, filling out the application, but.
You can definitely create an application and, and submit a membership for the city of Maplewood. We have money within our memberships to do so.
Okay. Okay, great. Well then, y'all, I will work with Mr. Traxler on that and then, um, report back. But yeah, thank you for your consideration on this. I think that it's gonna be helpful to us. Um, if anything, we won't just be in a silo while we're trying to do this work. We can talk to other, other, um, entities. Alright, item number six. Um, 2020 appointments to Board and Commissions Review. Discussion of 2021 appointments to Board and Commissions for Approval by Council. Really? This could have really just been discussion of appointments to Board and Commission by Council. Um, but what I would like to start off with is hindsight is 2020. Um, when I needed to appoint. A municipal judge. I did not have a handbook, I did not have, um, input. From anyone saying, hey, you know, this is how it was done, we should go ahead and, and do it this way. I relied upon the charter. Um, and so in going to the charter, it said the mayor appoints, council approves. Excuse me, and so I, I went that route. I used that same logic when I went for appointments. For our boards and commissions. And in hindsight, I can see that there were opportunities. Where we missed communicating with each other as a whole. And. Now that I know. We missed those opportunities, I want to make sure that we don't miss those again. I see us as a team. And I think that we are a good team. And I think that we collaborate well with each other when we all understand and we've communicated, um. To what we all want. Or what's going on. And like I said. Looking back, I can see that we were not doing that. And so. Knowing that now. I want you all to know. I will listen. I will work with you all. I will work to compromise on things. We may disagree. But I will still listen to you and hear you out. So, I hope that you all do not think that I won't listen to you going forward. If you thought that before now. I apologize for that misunderstanding, because I don't want anyone to feel like that or to think. So. With all of that being said. Excuse me, there are some things I would like to present to you all and then I want to listen to you all as well. The first thing that I would like to discuss. Is I had asked Attorney Graves. To provide us with a legal memo explaining, um. Or giving her legal opinion on the ordinance that involves design and review. And she came back. To us and she said that this ordinance is ambiguous regarding, uh, a person being a member of the business community. So. As my mentor would say. I have my lawyer hat on. And I need to take my lawyer hat off. I gotta put my mayor hat on. And so when I put my mayor hat on and I talked to another mayor, um. It was, it was, uh, Ms. Mayor Ella Jones in Ferguson. To get some advice, right? She was, but she's, she advised me to really look at the intent. What was the intent of that ordinance? And the intent of that ordinance was to make sure that we had Maplewood businesses. That were on this design and review board because. The design and review board does a lot of work with Maplewood businesses. They do a lot of work with signage, right? And so I appreciate Mayor Jones for giving me that insight because. I'm, I'm good. I have my mayor hat on, not my lawyer hat. And so, um, in learning that. I have contacted, well, I'm, I need to talk with you all, but I have contacted, um, the two people that I have presented to you all for appointment. Just to let them know that because of the intent. Um, and because they don't have businesses in Maplewood, that I would not be able to appoint them. And submit them to you all for approval. Um, and so I have apologized to them and I'm grateful that they are so kind because they understood. I think, um. The reason why. They applied was because of our application. And our application does not provide requirements. It just says, you know, these are the boards and commissions, rank them. And so them not knowing that they should look at an ordinance to see if they qualify, they're just telling us, this is where I want to serve. And so I'm grateful to them that they wanted to serve, um, and I, I'm sorry that that mistake occurred. Um, but I want to follow the intent of that ordinance. I want to make sure that we are, um, serving our Maplewood businesses and, and our residents. You know, building owners well. And so like I said, I'm, I'm withdrawing those, um, two appointments. So. Next thing. We have had someone withdraw their name for appointment. Uh, this person, uh, is, um. An African-American woman who is a business owner. And after the last meeting, she's just decided that she does not want to, um, serve in that capacity. I have told, um, this community member that. That's okay. I, I'm sorry, um, that she doesn't want to go forward anymore, but it is okay. And I also let her know that even though she no longer wants to serve in that capacity, she doesn't want her name presented, um, so she can be officially appointed. That if she has any ideas that she would like to provide to me or council, she is welcome to do so. And I also want to just state that to my colleagues as well as our community. Um, if you are not appointed to a board or commission, please know you are still welcome. To, um, go to a board or commission meeting. They actually have public comment, which I think a lot of people don't know. They have public comment, so you can make a public comment and then as always, you can reach out to me. And I'm sure you can reach out to my colleagues and let them know like, hey, I think this would be a good idea, um, you know, would you consider it? We'll definitely consider it, we'll definitely listen. Um, so. Those are the things that I wanted to talk with you about. And now I am ready to listen to you all.
So, I'll start, um. I, I appreciate your comments in the beginning. I, I agree. I think the root of this was. Like miscommunication all around because, you know, I, I feel like the community feels like. You know, what we were doing last time was trying to take away some right you have and, and, and that wasn't it at all, um. For me, I was just really confused because, um. You know, we had, we, something I didn't mention last time, I know I talked a lot about the process we developed. What I failed to mention is that that process came from the community, right? That process came from. Us hearing over and over from community members that it's not transparent, um. You know, I don't even know how to, you know, apply or I've applied three times. I mean, I witnessed that one personally and I don't get a response and so. You know, we had people consistently making public statements at our meetings saying, we want this to be transparent. We want it to be open, we want to be inclusive and so. I feel like, you know, the seven of us at that time spent a lot of time really trying to listen and make it that way and so. When we got to this process, I guess, I, I figured like at some point. That the, that we would, like that we would follow that, um. You know, and you're, and I guess too, I, I thought you were committed to that because your platform that you ran on, I mean, it specifically says, I want to make permanent. The process for boards and commissions. Our city has made some important changes, you know, and now residents, um, are interested in serving and so. That's what I had in my mind and I think that there was a timing problem here too that got away from all of us is that we had a lot of stuff going on. Um, during the timeframe that we had to review and comment, um, we were, that weekend, we were all spending significant time, uh. Interviewing candidates for city manager and making that decision, um, and so I know personally for me, I was working 10-hour days at work, so. It, it just sort of, um, you know, and I, I did review and we spoke and, you know, you and I conversed about my concerns that I had, um. But I think it just got to the point where. We didn't have a chance to talk together and now the process was different. And, um, no one really realized it till it was too late and then, you know, we started getting some emails from board members and. You know, Councilmember Phillips is calling from her vacation, like what's going on and like, can we just hit pause, right? And that's what we were trying to do and I know clearly it did not come out that way and I apologize for that and I apologize that. You know, you've, that you were blindsided or felt blindsided by that and that, it wasn't my intent, I just, you know, the call came in an hour before because. I'll be honest, what I was struggling with was this. Part of the, part of the problem, the issue that results, um, in utilizing what it says in the ordinances. Is that, and you know, now that we have so many people, now that they know about it and we have more people interested than there are spots. We have to make choices and that's not easy to do, but. But it's, to me, it is. Better for the community. I mean, well, maybe it's better for me, I don't know, but when we can sit down and talk together and say, hey, you know, I, all these people are really great. Um, they're qualified, but you know, I think these two would be really great for now, you know, maybe later. But the problem that resulted is that, you know, there were a couple of people. That I felt were overlooked and, but in order for me to express that. I now, under this process, I have to go personally after a community member. Who is not, like, it's not against them, but you know, I have to say, hey, Jenny Schmidt, I'm sorry, but. Know on you because this community member applied six months ago. I think that they have. Better experience or a voice that we need on this council and so. I was struggling with that because I don't, I didn't want, I didn't want to have to do that, but, but it, but again, I just wanted to know. If that is indeed what I had to do, um, and I just wanted a chance to talk about it before, so for me, that was what tonight was, was just. An opportunity for us to just talk and, and figure out like where we're going and how, what this is gonna look like and it sounds like that's what you want to do, I'm sure. I don't want to speak for them, but, um, that's what my colleagues want to do, so, um, so thank you, uh, for. That, I'm, I'm appreciative we have this opportunity.
I am, I would also like to follow up and say that I agree with, um, the comments shared by both the mayor and, um, council member. Uh, Mayor, I, I do owe you an apology, um, I did not like my tone last week or two weeks ago. Um, and I, I feel now that we're talking it out. And I I feel now that we're talking it out, we can, you know, move forward and we can talk further too, if you'd like. I'm happy to do that. And I think one of the lessons here that I have learned is that it is important that we codify our processes. We've even discovered tonight, just across different two different commissions, that some qualifications are listed in some ways in some places. Sometimes appointments are sort of grouped together in a brief sentence. And I hope that one of the fixes we can do is to make our application clearer so that community members have clear expectations. And also that we can just go ahead and codify our process. So which the goal of doing that would so would be so that it outlasts any one person. So with that being said, I wasn't sure if anyone else had anything else to add.
I just want to chime in because I unfortunately was not able to attend the last council meeting and was able to view the recording and afterwards had reached out to Mayor Knapper and and spoke with her. And I am, I I want to just make mention real briefly about the board and commission members who have served our city for the last 20 plus years, some of them. And apologize to them on behalf of the city that that we maybe did not go about this process as as well as as we should have. So I think that is just something that some of those those community members don't didn't necessarily know that we have an overabundance of of applicants at this point and that we have you know, multiple, multiple people asking to join our boards and commissions, which is a wonderful change from 18 or 24 months ago, when, you know, it was it was a struggle to find people to join. So so I just I just want to say thank you to everyone who has applied, who has reapplied, and thank you to those members who have served us thanklessly for many, many years on our boards and commissions.
Sorry, Mayor, are you going to say something?
No, no, go.
Okay. I was just hoping if we could just go ahead and turn to specific candidates because I did have two quick questions. I'm one of them, one of the appointments to the Parks Board is for a resignation, but I didn't have any record of resignation. So I wasn't sure. It said, I think it was Beth Newman's.
Yeah.
So so that that is for Catherine Maloney. Ms. Maloney was sent an email resigning and Mr. Traxler has that. And she was actually finishing a term for another person.
Would it be possible when those come in that they're forwarded to us so we know when there's someone who's resigned as well? Who I don't know who I don't know who they go to. I don't know if it's random.
Right now, they go they go to the mayor.
Okay.
So I didn't get that one. I just want to put that in there. It didn't go to this mayor. Okay, I didn't get that one. Okay.
I read it to her and she told me, but I I don't think any of us got that got that resignation email. Did we? Anybody else get it?
No, I think that's what we're determining. No one, no one got it.
Yeah.
And we can absolutely send it out to everybody. And it's just the way we've always done to send it to the mayor because the mayor makes the appointment. So but we can absolutely send those out. I'll make sure to make a note of it. So that that happens every time.
Thank you.
Sure.
So I would like to speak on three, three things. First, Councilmember Schmidt. I do want to make a process that is transparent and collaborative with with council, and I want to make that permanent. I think again, where I can see a missed communication is what that looks like. And I was not privy to everything that you all did when you when you created this in August. I learned, for example, after talking with Councilmember Phillips, that our former mayor reached out to people and was asking, you know, about them. I had no idea, right? And that that was I I'm looking at it like, okay, so that's a part of the process too. So there were things that the former mayor was doing that was like a part of this process that you all may not have been aware of. But somebody needed to because you see what 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 happened. Again, hindsight is 2020 when I I talked to Mr. Traxler in May, and I was like, will you please make sure that everyone that is currently on a board or commission whose term is expired, they know that they will need to reapply? And he sent an email. But now I think we are all learning that folks don't check their email all the time. And so and that's a problem, right? Especially when when you want to give them an opportunity to apply again, or you want to make sure that they meet a deadline to apply. And so afterwards, I, you know, made sure I was like, hey, Mr. Traxler, did you do this? And he was like, yes. And then he told all of us like what he did. But when I talked with him, I said, you know what? In the future, can we please have like the liaisons for these boards and commissions, make sure that they tell them during a meeting, this is coming. And if you would like to, you know, seek reappointment, you will need to submit another application or submit an application. I mean, so he said that he would. So I think we're still trying to, now that I'm with you all, I think we're still trying to work through this process. I think we're starting to see like, okay, this is what needs to be addressed. This is what needs to be fixed. So it's clear. And like I said, I we're a team. I think we're a good team, and I want to continue to listen to you all and collaborate so we can make that make that a reality that withstands us.
And I think you and I had talked too about like just the concept, since this was the first time we had like, you know, is developing a survey or email that goes out to the people who applied, you know, six months ago, and we didn't have a spot, like asking them just to submit a survey saying, yes, I'm still interested in. And I think for me, I love to write it down. Like, I want to write it down because it's hard to remember if we don't write it down. So I think that it would be great for us at some point in the near future to hold a work session where we all are come prepared to figure out what needs to happen and put it in a document and put who's responsible for doing it. I think I think that would be a great idea.
I yeah, I I agree with you. Councilmember Crossley, thank you so much. I appreciate you for apologizing. I really do. Thank you. And then to Councilmember Phillips, comment, I want to also add to that. I too apologize because council and I missed opportunities to communicate with each other that has affected our volunteers and our community members. And it's also affected, you know, the people that I've presented for appointments. And so in no way was it my intent to make anyone upset or to cause harm to anyone. And I I just do hope that everyone involved accepts my apology. And just know, I've been mayor for 70 days today. I am still learning. Please grant me grace. But please know, I will always be learning and I'm always open to listening and to collaboration. And I'm not, I'm not trying to harm folks. So I will not do this again. At any turn, I'll be like, so y'all want to talk about this? We can talk about this. Okay. All right. Did anyone have any additional questions about the appointment? Oh, you know what? Let me also add. If you have a recommendation for an appointment, please tell me. And I want you all to know that Councilmember Crossley had a recommendation. And she let me know. And I looked at that application and I was like, okay, I think this is a good, uh, this would be a good appointment. So I want you all to know, like, you all can reach out to me and say, hey, please, like, consider this person. You all, I hope you know that you can go to people that you know and say, I think you would be good for this. You know, you should, you should submit an application. And then you can tell me, would you please consider this person for appointment? Like, I'm open to that. Or like, like Councilmember Schmidt said, having this conversation in a work session so we can flesh this out, so this process is better for our community. That's it. That's all I got.
I did have one question. I'm so the library project, right? We got that volunteer. Is that the same Lorraine as the Lorraine? Okay. Can you kind of explain the rationale a little bit for like your vision for that? And if you think there's an interference at all?
I so I thought about that. Uh, that's a good question. Thank you for asking. I thought about that. And what first I what she was interested in wasn't going to be available. And so I told her that. And then I I was just like, okay, so like, would you like to wait until there's availability for this? And then we can, I can come back to you? Or would you like to serve on your second choice? And she she chose the second choice. So my thinking was, although she is doing this project and she is going to present that to us as well as the library board, she's already doing so much work that she will actually know a lot about the library board before she even gets the is 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 serving on it. And so that's how I kind of worked through that. So and we need to talk about design and review. So when I was going through this process, I was focused on the applications that we all received. And so I talked to one person, Councilmember Schmidt, the person that you talked with me about that you had brought up to me. I I talked with her. She's not available.
So is that the person that I wanted? I mean, I think her first choice was Parks. All right. So she is not available. Okay.
She's she's not available.
And and that was the one person I I really thought got overlooked. So again, going back to if we had sent out a survey of some sort, we would know who was interested. So, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for following up with her.
Yeah. So she's not available. I'll have to, you know, go back through and look at Okay, sorry. I'll have to go back through and look to see who submitted an application. But so here here and I think may lie the problem with our design and review board, we need to have Maplewood businesses. And I don't, I don't believe that we have enough right now that's submitted an application. And so I'd like to know what ideas you all have or what you would like to see regarding those two appointments. Because as it as it stands, we we have the the folks that were on board and their time expired, they didn't submit an application. But I suspect that they may still be interested. Or there may be other people in the community, there are business owners that are interested. So what would you all like to do about that?
I would love to reach out to the existing members who perhaps either didn't submit an application or maybe thought they did and and we didn't receive it or for whatever reason. I would reach out to those existing members before we sort of go back to the drawing board completely. I think it's, you know, given the opportunity, some of them may choose to stay and and, you know, again, the the institutional knowledge that we would be gaining by having them stay, I think would be would be good.
I agree. I was hoping that that that's what somebody would say because that's what I was going to say too. I really hope, you know, that we could reach out to them first.
So I'll, oh, go ahead. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
You know, I I was just gonna say, I agree. And I think clearly, you know, that's one where maybe we need to do some more specialized like communication outreach to people so that we are making sure people know that qualification, not just in the application, but just like getting the word out about it. So but I and because I'd rather fill it than leave it open for leave them with only four people, I think. So.
I will say, we had someone apply for the Special Business Advisory Board, which I think would qualify qualify them for a design and review board position. He's a business owner. And so that might be an avenue worth pursuing. I think I think I think on the list I'm looking at their number 30.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
I I think the problem is perhaps we might have to do some digging that their particular business owned is not located in Maplewood. I think they're they may own property, but does that it qualifies you for special business district? But we get back to the question of owning is different than owning a business in Maplewood, I guess, would be the only thing I would point out. So.
So then I also want to ask. I'll tell you what, y'all, design and review is a beast. I was gonna say. Because right now, Mr. Traxler told me that we have another member that does not own a business in Maplewood, but is working from home. And so that has been used as a way for that member to stay on the board. And so, Mr. Traxler, can you just talk to us a little bit about that?
That was during the pandemic when he when this individual was appointed. The designer review board is the word beast is a good example. It is the most difficult, challenging board we have. If you have somebody that wants to be on that board, you want to hold on to them as best as you can because they they meet every month. There's never breaks and they can meet several hours at a time because they they have long agendas. It's basically like doing homework every time they meet. I mean, it's not a, it's not, it's truly a dedicated person that wants to be on that board. And and also, that's probably the one where you you definitely need qualifications. One of the members whose time expired, their their term was up is it was an expert in signage, right? I mean, that's what this 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 person did basically for a living. So it was was very useful. So I think you probably need for sure, two, potentially three business owners. I had lunch with, coincidentally, with one of the other designer review board members and I passed it on to the mayor that but was not getting reappointed. And they said, whatever you need, Mayor, you 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 got the emails well from this this person. So I think I think one would for sure come back. And and so you would still most likely need, you need one for sure, maybe two. We haven't followed up with the resident who I believe is probably back at work now. So they would most likely be ineligible. We haven't asked the question, but I believe if we did, we'd find out they were ineligible.
And I'm not gonna lie, I'm pretty sure sometime I time is a mystery to me now, but in the last couple of years, we discussed this board particularly and talked about this problem and discussed changing the ordinance so that it was more clear and that like the third person was either or. So you didn't have that problem with, does it have to be both? Because that's the question. They have to be a resident and a business owner.
We did. And that's we did. And that's what we were going to talk about making that when we did all the changes.
Right. Clearly, we did not. Yes, we should have gotten on that one sooner. So yeah.
One of the members that is no longer, her term is up, is a resident and owns two businesses in town.
Okay.
I don't know. I don't know if she's she's she wants to come back or not. I could give her a call. She's she's very good at that.
Mr. Mr. Traxler, I will give them a call.
Okay. And and you know the number I'm talking about. She's very, she's be difficult to replace.
I do.
And so we still may need, we still may need one. Um, and so we still may need, we still may need one, um, depending on the scenario there.
Well.
I'd be willing to interpret, I mean, given the legal advice we got, I guess I'd be willing to interpret that third one as not having to be a business owner, as being, but, I mean, that's up to everybody, I think.
That's what I thought we talked about, Jenny, because on the, in this paper, that I just wrote down, you know, on the Designer Review Board, uh, the criteria, I've got two residents, two business owners, and one can be either or, you know, I don't know if that's what we really said, but that's what I've got that we said.
And that's what we determined to change it to, so we didn't have this problem, but clearly we did not do that.
Alright.
But I don't know how other people feel, I just feel based on the, the legal memorandum we got, um, I, I agree the intent is to also have business owners, but I think that having two, um, Maplewood business owners is, is good.
Yeah.
Um, on a board of five people.
Especially because signage is such a, such a critical issue with what the Designer Review does on a day-to-day basis, or on a monthly basis. And one of the things, as we're talking about boards and commissions, just to keep in mind, when you look at your future SPD appointments, which obviously I won't be involved in, but try to get a, you know, we were talking about representation, you want residents, you want business owners, consider keeping a property owner on there too, because they're, what, what a property owner, what, but versus what a business owner may look at, may be differences, and so the SPD doesn't, it says you can have both, and I believe right now we have all business owners, and that's fine. It's just if you can get a property owner in the future, a year from now, just please give that consideration, because it does give you a different perspective. I used to run the SPD meeting, and the property owner always had a, another perspective that the business owners did not think of, so it gave a little bit broader representation.
Alright. So, next, next steps, I will contact uh, the two members of the Designer Review Board, who did not submit an application, and I will talk with them. Um, and then, I think, based on what Councilmember Schmidt just said, the, the third, uh, member that we were discussing is fine to remain on. Okay. Alright. So I will do that, and then I will, I guess let, let you all know. And then, uh, Sustainability Commission, we have, now we have, or I have rather, um, uh, an appointment that I need to fill, and so I just want to let you all know, if you have any recommendations, um, please, send them to me. Excuse me, for that position, we need for the person to be a business owner. So I think we, we have some applications, um, that can cover that, so I think we're good, we're good there. It was just Design Review, or I was just like, OMG, uh, this isn't gonna work. Alright. And then, I definitely don't want to ever get in a habit where we're like, yeah, we need to talk about this, and then we don't set a date to talk about it. So, so before we leave this conversation, um, you know, uh, would you all like to have a work session, uh, so we can discuss this process, flesh this out a little bit more, um, in August? Okay. So I will just, uh, circle back to Mr. Traxler about putting that on, on a work session in August.
We're gonna need to follow up on the Human Services Commission anyway, so they could potentially be part of the same work session.
Absolutely.
And just thinking about our timing, I don't know if it would make more sense for us to do it on the tenth, since the twenty-fourth, I think, is when we're gonna be discussing the, uh, RFPs.
And then I guess in terms of what, you know, the essential point is now, like, appointing the people, um, since, I don't, I don't, none of us was intending not, never to vote on those people, I think we were, we just wanted to have a discussion first, so, I mean, at least the people that, um, have been identified that aren't still missing, can we put them on next week's?
You can put them on the agenda for next.
And then vote on them?
Tuesday, yes. And then if we just don't have everybody wrapped up, that's fine, just as they come in, it would,
Okay.
then just add those. And I, and I want to make sure, just point of clarification, do we say August tenth to, to discuss this again? Or do we say a work session? Because we have a council meeting on August tenth.
A work session?
Yes.
Work session at six before the meeting on the tenth?
Yes, thank you. Do that. Alright, so then, I want to make sure I understand, um, our, our city council meeting is going to be July thirteenth, and we will have this on the agenda, um, so we can vote.
Yeah, because the, the only other person I would have maybe advocated to replace, one of them is not interested, so I, I was fine with the remaining appointments, so.
Okay, okay. Um, so, if you all, I, I'd like to try to fill as much as, I'd like to try to fill all of them, like I said, I'm gonna reach out to the two folks on Design and Review, and then, um, I have someone in mind for sustainability, but if you could look over the applications, really for sustainability, and let me know if you have any recommendations, uh, that you would like for me to consider, um, I would appreciate that, because I'd like to try to submit someone to you all, uh, for approval, on that as well, on the thirteenth.
And that person needs to be a business owner, correct? Okay.
They, yes. Alright. Alright. That was good, y'all. Any, any, any additional discussion before we move on?
Um, just a clarification from the, uh, chat that came up, um, can someone please explain what this means for boards in the interim? Um, as in the past, when we, um, were delayed in, um, replacing, uh, vacant positions, the existing members, um, can continue to serve until we, um, name their replacements. Anthony, am I accurate in that statement?
Yeah, unless, unless they're ineligible, they are still active, so right now, if there's, if somebody had, if somebody's term has expired, but they still meet the criteria, they are still an active board member. Board or commission member.
And let me just add to that, um, I, I have my lawyer hat on, because I, I wanted to know, like, is there ordinance that supports this? What supports this? Uh, the Missouri State Constitution supports that, so, I, I asked Jackie just to be sure. Look, y'all, I, I'm about following rules, so, I just wanted to be sure that we weren't just doing this, um, just because that there is something that, that tells us or instructs us to do that, and so our constitution, our state constitution does so.
Um, and a, again, just a, a follow-up from the, uh, the chat, um, since we are creating, um, uh, member orientation packets, can we include some verbiage about terms, and how, um, how to reapply at the end of your term, et cetera, and that, you know, you may continue to serve until your replacement is appointed, all of that fun stuff?
It's a great idea.
So, so, once again, the City of Columbia has a PDF document online, um, that goes through like, the most important rules regarding Missouri sunshine law. Um, and so, I think that, that's gonna be a project, but I think with this packet, just like the process, we just keep adding to it, um, and, or tweaking it until it's great. And, um, I think that there are ways that we can make sure that folks, you know, like you said, know what they need.
Packages would need to be amended each year anyway, because we always include, but not all, but most of them have a budget, so we include those anyway, so we could easily make changes. And in that packet, the, the standard ones that the council approved, that maybe a month ago, the, the terms and the, the members are all listed, it, it says not to share, we have everyone's, they have their own home phone numbers and cell phone numbers, but that's, that's an internal document that every board and commission member can have, in case they need to reach out to other members, and it, it does list their, their terms, and, and when it expires, and we can put a footnote in there, um, you would still remain an active member until, um, your term expires, or you are reappointed or replaced. I'll make sure to do something like that, Sandy, I'll make sure you're okay with it before it goes out.
Yeah, a, and I would just clarify that, um, we probably need to specifically state that they need to reapply before the end of their term, if they're interested in continuing to serve.
And we should be able to put a link to the application, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure everyone's aware, we, everyone was, it was not just an email, we also sent out email blasts, and we also sent out via social media. And it was, it was mentioned a long time ago, in person, whenever you guys had made that statement, we let everybody know, every, everywhere, hey, if your term's up, this is the case. And so, um, we could always improve though, and, and make additional, um, reach out additionally to these members. And I like your comments, Andy, about phone calls, I, I agree, that's, that's always sometimes the best way to get ahold of people, especially when they're busy, and you get a lot of junk email, you skip stuff sometimes, everyone's guilty of it.
Alright, anything further before we move on? Okay. Item number seven.
I'm sorry, I just was gonna address another question in the chat. Um, an existing board member asked, can they get these too, and you, my understanding is they will also be receiving these packets as well, right, Mr. Traxler?
Yes.
So, it's gonna be sent out to everybody?
Absolutely.
Existing, yeah.
Yes. And it would be, it would be resent every year for the most, because we assume there'll be minor changes each year. It'll just be sent via email, and we'll make sure that the staff liaison says, if anyone has any questions, contact your staff liaison, because within that packet, we list the, the contact information for those particular boards and commissions.
Yeah, you know what, I'm just gonna make a note too, I think that it's, it's always a good idea to ask folks that are serving, like, what are best practices, what would you like to see, and so I think we should also just include, like, ways for them to do that. Now, folks just love surveys, no, not really, I'm not really trying to ask people to do any more surveys, but we just need to be able to collect information from them, like, okay, you know, how is it going? What could we improve upon, what could be better? So if we could try to figure out a way to include that too, and I'll make a note.
I think I could put in the packet that any comment should be sent to the mayor on evenings and weekends, late, late, late hours.
That's cold, that's cold-blooded.
I'm on my way out, so I could just make those little changes.
He's like, let's just burn it down.
You're supposed to be bringing on a Saturday and a Sunday, wondering what's going on.
Okay.
So I think I've got everything done, and I'll make sure, I, I'll go back before Councilmember Phillips, because, uh, just to make sure I get the language you want specifically. Um, I know we've got all those ready to go, so once these are all approved, we'll send them out to everybody, um, every board and commission member, uh, to make sure they can see these welcome packets. And maybe we could even put something in the email, if you have any suggestions for next year's packet, please make sure to, uh, let me know, and we'll make sure to improve it.
That is, alright, that's great, alright, thank you all. Um, item number seven, uh, block grant, sidewalk account or care and subsis, excuse me, subsistence to twenty thousand dollars prior allocation to sidewalks.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, um, and, and update the council, uh, tomorrow is my deadline, the final, final, we've already approved twenty thousand ago, these subsistence payments, which would basically be utility assistance, rental assistance. When I was talking with the mayor earlier, she had mentioned, she had talked to some representatives from the council, or, or from the county, and that there are a lot of federal, there's a lot of federal money out there right now, and the money we would receive, we'd be receiving within the next, within this fiscal year, so we basically have to use it soon, we couldn't wait a few years to spend this money, so right now there's federal money available, which is not usual, obviously with the pandemic. So I want to make sure, I double-check with the council beforehand, because when I brought it to you the first time, there, there was some available, but there wasn't quite as much. So do we, do we really, do we want to continue to keep this here, or do we want to put this back into sidewalks, and then hope, and then basically make available, or, um, help to educate the public, what federal assistance is available? If there were no federal assistance available, I would, wouldn't even bring this to you, but because there is federal assistance available at this time, uh, I would, I wish it was the upcoming block grant application we're gonna have on the thirteenth, you know, so we wouldn't get that money for about eighteen months or two years, because I'm under no misconception that I don't believe that federal money will be there eighteen months or two years from now, but because it is now, before I sign off on the final paperwork tomorrow, I wanted to make sure the council is aware that this is something that I had a discussion with the mayor about, and I just want to make sure the rest of the council's on the same page.
So, how much would twenty grand in sidewalks get us?
It could get quite a bit, I mean, it, it really can, sidewalks are only four inches thick versus your, you know, your slabs, which are eight inches thick, you know, the, the base is pretty easy. And we do have a lot of problems through sidewalks. I had emailed the mayor a copy of the, um, eligible areas, the block grant areas, and, and you know, it's a, it's a good chunk of town, would you say, Ma- Mayor Canapera, about maybe thirty percent of town, so, uh, and we could definitely make, you know, try to use those, um, in front of lower, you know, income housing, if need be, um. We could, we could get something out of that, there's, there's no doubt we could. And right now, if we reallocate the twenty, we'll have four thousand in for that, that year, which is not much.
So I'm sorry, will you, will you, will you clarify for me the, the numbers then, where we end up with, like, what we have left?
Yeah, within that year, we had reallocated the majority to, um, home improvement programs for home repairs, which are one hundred percent income eligible, and it can be done anywhere in the city. We had, um, a portion of that for Greenwood Park,
Right.
uh, improvements to the playgrounds, a, and, uh, the slide, and there was some other, uh, equipment that needed to be replaced, and then twenty-four thousand was allocated towards sidewalks in income-eligible areas. And then, be- before, there was a lot of this federal money available, we were, we were talking about care and subsistence, which typically caps out at ten thousand dollars in a typical block grant application.
Right.
Because we were re, we, we allocating the money, we called, staff called the county and said, hey, can we put this all in care and subsistence?
Right.
And, and I brought it to the council at that time, because they said, yes, we could. Subsequent to that, there's been a lot more federal money being freed up, for a while there, it was kind of, it was, there was some gridlock there, and it wasn't becoming available to people, but now there is money available. And so the thought is, before I sign this paperwork tomorrow, does the council still want to have this additional twenty where we agreed to in care and subsistence? Or do we want to put that back into sidewalks, allow people to use the federal money? Uh, and like I said, make improvements within low-income eligible areas.
So we'll still have the ten thousand that we had initially put in care of subs, so there will still be some money there, okay? Yeah, that, I, I would be in favor of that, and especially I think another good place to look is around parks, if there's some bad sidewalks around parks, or other public spaces people utilize, that would be great. Um, but yeah, that.
We can definitely do that.
And then I guess we would maybe want to do some real, trying to get the word out about the other program as well. Like how they would apply for the federal money.
Yes, and I think, I think a newsletter, and then obviously social media is a, those are pretty good tools. I know, for years, um, especially for some of the newer members that aren't, aren't aware, we used to do a lot more in parks, but that was because the, the advertising wasn't as robust for the home improvement program, once we started putting that in our newsletter and promoting it more, uh, the county's applications got much higher, and, um, right now, we never run into a situation where we don't have somebody on the list ready for, for some of those money, and we're, we're getting a lot of bang for our buck with that home improvement program. And the care and subsistence program, and the home improvement program, I was talking with the mayor about this this morning, the best thing about those two programs is it's one hundred percent income eligible, meaning you can't live in a five hundred thousand dollar house, and, but just because you happen to be in an area where there's a lot of lower-income individuals, you still qualify to have improvements in your area, so to speak, so those two Area, so to speak. So those two programs, I think historically the council has favored because it truly targets. To the best possible way, best possible extent, low income individuals. So am I, am I hearing the council's okay with going back, uh keeping it in the sidewalks?
I just have a quick question, do we have um any uh? Idea how much unmet need there is in the um subsistence payment program?
We don't right now, we don't have a a list. Sarah, do you have anything to add? You look like you've got something.
Well, um as the county employee on the call, um. The county was, the county received thirty million dollars and I don't know how much of that. They've put out, but I would not imagine that it's twenty-nine million. Um, cause it, and not, and that's not a criticism, to be clear, the county or the department running that program. But there's a national issue um and a national level trend of these programs having a hard time getting dollars out the door. Um, so I wouldn't be surprised either, just knowing the sort of. Varying degrees of uh resources dedicated to, to the different programs trying to get these funds out. And we allocated ten grand to this sort of. Utility rent assistance and then ultimately had a hard time getting it out the door as well. So I'd rather sort of pair up and team up with the county um to get that funding into people. To people in Maplewood who need that help, and then we know, we go ahead and spend more money on our sidewalks, because we know we can spend it. If that, if that makes sense.
Thanks for that clarification, because I think it's, you know, although a- as we all know, just because there is money allocated um from our government. Doesn't mean that it's getting into the right hands, so.
We have that problem, a lot of that is the home improvement program as well, council member Phillips. There's a lot of hoops that that need to be. And sometimes people will start the process but won't finalize it, and it's unfortunate, because they need the money. Is everyone okay then? Um, keeping the twenty thousand in sidewalks, I just want to make sure I've got a consensus.
That's fine.
Thank you.
And I just want to make a plug for another fabulous MRH student that sent me an email. Telling me that we have issues with our sidewalks and suggesting that we create some type of. You know, system where someone could call in and say, there's an issue with this sidewalk on, you know, this, this street. Um, and, and it can be listed to be looked at and addressed, so. Once again, we have the best school district.
But I think we just give them Anthony's number, right? Yeah, I'll put his cell phone.
When they can go into the contact us form, there's a, there's a fill out a complaint form and that will definitely get allo- or get sent out and and. And we obviously have to take those very seriously, because if. Right, we don't want, we'd be surprised, I mean, we'd be trip and fall accidents we get each year, we get several. Get pretty serious in some cases.
Benny and I are really good at that.
Well, we also have several people in our community who are in wheelchairs or something, and that makes it very difficult for them to navigate our community when, you know. Every third street, they have to figure out a way around.
And we still have some entire sections of streets that don't have sidewalks on both sides.
Yeah.
Yes. We've got one section that's gonna be repl- uh we're, we're adding that this year. I ca- I gotta look at the street, but we're, we're starting to add all those. Um, some that we, and some will only keep one side, just because it's a biography or something, but we're basically gonna eliminate every street. That has no sidewalks on either side within the next three years.
Wow, that's good.
Alright, thank you all. Okay, item number eight, citizen and business survey question review and approval of questions. Um, my only concern about this is the last part, which is the approval of questions. And, and the reason why that's a concern is because. Excuse me, we have been, as a council, have been having conversations about um this survey. Kind of doing a lot of work, not even double duty, like triple, quadruple duty. Um, and so we're trying to also make sure that we are putting questions, inserting questions in this survey that are asking about value. Like, what do you want community to look like? And so that's why I was just like, I, you know. I don't know about like approval of the seat, of of the questions this evening, because I think we need to talk about, you know, adding those questions in. And and also, Mister Trackser, I want you to be a part of this conversation, you know, as well.
I said we were gonna, staff was gonna do one more refinement beforehand, I talked to Laura and I said, you know what? This is not that third version, this is only the second version, I figured let's get it to the council where it's still kind of rough, because. We wanted to make sure Laura and I weren't shaping it too much. So um, that's fine, we can just let them know, I just wanted to at least let you know where we stood in the process, the council can see that. Um, at least you can see we're ready to, we're making progress on this, so um. Are, are we looking at, would you like to put this on, on an agenda? We were talking about setting a time, maybe to. Look this over, are we talking about looking at this in August at the other work?
No, I, I think we can have this conversation right now, I just. We can have it now, but just in case someone's like, you know what, let's just wait um. And brainstorm afterwards, I just wanted to make sure that we have that, that opportunity to do that, but I think we should start this conversation.
Okay.
But I, but I agree, because I was, there was a lot for tonight, and so, and this was the last thing, and so I tried. But I, I like Mayor Na- Canapper was, was trying to remember, we've had so many conversations about things that we want in this. Um, and I, my brain was not able to fully do that um before tonight, but I also was. You could send us, I mean, no one else has to look at it, but like what the original set of questions is, so. I could kind of understand sort of what was eliminated and maybe, that's just helpful for me, because.
Yeah.
I think.
Like, it was stuff talking about like rural communities.
Right, I'm sure it's wholly inapplicable, but I just, I, that's just helpful for me um in the way my brain works.
Would you like me to send this up and and put this on the agenda for the thirteenth and basically include the original as well as? What we pared it down to, or or are we looking at maybe doing it in a work session?
I would like maybe for us to start this conversation and then see how we want to fit in the timeline, just depending on where we get, um. I started with this first, um so I had a little bit more energy um by the, I went in reverse order, um. So if it's okay, I have a couple specific things. Um, the first one is in the public safety section of the community survey. There's not a question about racial bias. I'm not sure how to, I'm not an expert in surveys, um. I think it's a missed opportunity for us to not include something. Um, I'm not exact, I'm not, I don't have a specific question in mind, but I'm. Like, I think that's an important data point, I think um with everything. Uh, that's been going on both in Maplewood and broader, um. We should take this survey as an opportunity to ask some sort of question about. Um, racial bias or some, some variation on that theme.
So, ca- council member Crossley, you were referring to um. Page two, item number four, public safety.
Yeah, I'm scrolling, I'm getting there.
Yes, that's what it, that's what it is.
Thank you.
We can just ask, we can ask the uh survey company to come up with something, I'm sure that there's been something done somewhere that they could, they could. Uh, just submit something and that could at least get the discussion going, and if you want to tweak it, once you see it, that, we can do it that way.
Okay, can I ask council member Crossley, because I kind of had a like similar question, maybe it was designed to that, because I had noted like. You know, it says how quickly police respond, but I also had a question like the manner in which, you know, fire and police respond, like how satisfied? Are you with that? And I don't know if that's a, a different question altogether, or um. What people's thoughts were on that, because I agree, I, I, what?
I, I don't think the issue for us is how quickly, I think it's how appropriately they respond. In terms of, is it an overuse of? Force when they respond, do you call and you get six patrol cars, or do you get one patrol car?
So I have seen some complaints on Facebook about the quickness as well, so I, I guess I. I'd like to keep that in there, but I, I think your question is valid too, is that. The level of response.
Right.
Is, is important, so maybe that's.
We can get something in there as well and 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 add, add something and we'll, we'll send it out to you. You definitely want to have response times, especially because I heard council member Schmidt mentioned fire as well, so, you know.
Yes.
Fire was critical on response time, well, police is as well, but especially when you're talking cardiac events or something of that nature.
Yeah, I think, I think using. Using the word appropriate response is probably the best way, not the level, but the appropriateness of the response. Was it, you know, six cars for a traffic ticket or, you know, one for uh. Somebody running around with a baseball bat.
Yeah, and I think that's something that maybe when we're reviewing these results, we can have just an honest conversation about. Yes, this is data from our community, we have other data points showing, right, that our traffics, like our traffic stop report. From the Attorney General's Office, that is, is another data point too. And so they may not match up perfectly, but uh one isn't better than the other, and all should be considered when we're talking about this, because. Our own biases are reflected in our own survey, survey responses. Um, I don't want to dominate this, but I do have a list, um. So, okay, I can just kind of keep working through it, please interrupt if you have something, I'm. Have concerns about section five, about sort of the safety, a lot of your own perception of safety. Um, maps onto your own privileges and um your own biases. And I think there's a lot of questions there about safety, um that may not be getting to the types of answers that we want. Um, right, like. People, I would rather ask questions about like specifically pedestrian safety. Than like a vague question about, is it safe for me to be outside at night? Because that's gonna be, that's gonna be, that's coded um in some ways. And so I, I, I think. And also like your own fear of certain crimes can be rooted in a real experience and can also be rooted in. A lot of racism, and so I, I would, I would like to maybe rework that section um entirely.
Because I think for me, you know, how safe do you feel from crime? I guess for me is, you know, crimes can, I mean, crime happens. For me, the question is how, how satisfied are you with the police's response to, to those crimes? You know, in terms of like resolving, you know, we, for instance, car break-ins, like we've had a lot of those, so people. But I'm, I agree with you, you're gonna get a lot of people being like, well. I'm not feeling very safe from property crime, but it's not really getting us an answer that we don't know already.
Yeah, and I also, I would like maybe to ask a question about the city's steps to prevent crime, right? Just as much as we should be invested in responding to it, what steps are we taking to eliminate it? Um, so maybe there's an opportunity there in the overall C D section to ask something like that. I'm.
Can I ask, so were you going to, sorry, I guess if this is what they gave us, my guess is they may. Have alternative questions, maybe they do, but did you have some suggestions to fill in for that, or?
Um. No, but I could make some if that would be helpful.
Paying them, we're paying them to do this, so if you'd like, I could take all these comments, I could draft an email. Copy the council on it, and then we can say, can you send another version and try to address these, and if, if, if not.
Okay.
That's, that's what we're paying them for.
Sounds good.
Okay.
We may have to do a couple of those, so council member Schmidt, I agree.
You, you can also give them a, a copy of tonight's video and say, please. Listen to the council members starting at approximately eight fifteen.
Excellent point, we can do that.
Gotta love Zoom.
I'm on the parks, um, section. I would like to see maybe a question about accessibility, I know that's something our Parks Board is interested in. And something about maybe water features in parks. Um, I think those would both be good for that section. And. Section seven. I think it's an opportunity for us to um reduce redundancy a little bit while also managing. Some expectations, so in section seven, questions four and five are about purchasing land to preserve open space. And purchasing land to develop neighborhood parks. The city is not, unless I am unaware of some major reserve, we're not really in the position to do that.
We're talking about, that's kind of the law, along the lines of a lot of what, what was removed and that was just over, oversaw that or missed that, so. I agree with you, that's probably more for a, a rural or a city that has room for annexing or, or open space.
Well, and the funds for it too, right? Um, that's, that's a major piece of this, and I would, I would hate to set sort of the expectation that this is something we're. Able to consider, um where it would take a major budget transformation for us to do that.
We have eleven parks in a, a mile and a half square city too, so I, I don't. I don't think we need anymore, it's nice to have them, don't get me wrong, but I mean, I, I don't think we'd be acquiring additional property. To do so, I can remove those.
Sure, um, my next section, just jumping ahead, is number eleven about city leadership. It asks a question about the effectiveness of appointed boards and commissions. I'm like, I'm wondering if that is the word we want to use. I don't know how we would necessarily measure the boards and commissions efficacy, so I'm wondering if we wanted to maybe do like accessibility. Or I'm. A different third term, but effectiveness, I think, is hard, because it's, what, what is our expectation of their efficacy? Um, besides completing routine business? I don't know.
So I had also noted to add a, a question about, I think, accessibility to your city officials too. I was, would like to know how people feel about how accessible we are, so. I was kind of thinking along those lines a- as well, I agree, I don't, I don't know how you really measure that.
I like, um, council member Crossley, I like the switching it to ask about um accessibility. To our boards and commissions, um and then if, if it is possible. Because like I, like I had said earlier, a lot of folks don't know that they have public comment, I didn't know that until I started, you know, going um to the meetings. And I was just like, oh my gosh, like folks can speak, so, so, yeah, I really like that question. And then also to ask, like, it would be nice if our community could just say, like, well, it'd be nice if, if this commission, you know. I don't know, did something, you know, within our community, or that we knew that we, we could have access to them. Or we knew that we could give suggestions, so I think I'm just really plus wanting what you just said, that's all.
Yeah, and that raises, I'm, a good point too, is if we're able just to tack on like an open comment box. That sort of qualitative data could be helpful. Um, as much as the rankings is, are, are gonna be helpful for sort of saying like eighty percent of people are satisfied with X service. Um, giving folks an opportunity for some storytelling of their own, um, could be helpful, uh and I would, and I would like to see that. I'm. In. Section fifteen, number eleven, asks about the overall quality of a city electric utility, um. I, if we, if we're gonna collect data on how people feel about the utilities, I think we should make it clear that we are not responsible for Ameren Inspire. Um, because I, I know, I think I know what that answer is, but I think that's probably one of those things that just like slipped through the cracks and that's, so that's no big deal. I'm. Section sixteen, questions one and two, I think were a little redundant. Um, the first one says, being within an easy walk of other places and things in a community such as shops and parks. And then it asks about sidewalks and places to take walks, so I'm wondering if we can kind of. Combine that?
I guess I kind of see those as different, maybe, I see one as like accessibility. To places in our community and the other is just like, you know, if I want to take my dog for a walk. You know, having a space, but I, I see your point that they're a little confusing, so maybe if. There's a way to further distinguish them, I don't, I, I read them as different things, but I don't know, maybe I'm reading them.
I read them as different things too, because it's like, I thought it's asking, do there are sidewalks? And places to take walks, like, is there sidewalks everywhere you wanna go? That's kinda how I'm reading that. Um, you know, like we talk, some places don't have sidewalks. So could that be what that means?
And the first is like, how much do you value being in proximity to restaurants or stores, I guess, was the first one. But I don't, but I don't know.
Now I thought it, thought it too.
Maybe if we changed within an easy walk to, well. I don't know. We could probably mess with that a little.
You could just say proximity too. Um, and then people can interpret that as walking or driving. Um, right, like I'm I'm within walking distance of Schnucks, but I'll admit that I often drive, so I don't have to carry all my. Bags back, so it proximity might just cover our bases there. I'm, my second to last comment, I promise, um is. On the demographics section, twenty-four asks about gender and we provide male, female, and other. I would like to request that we change that to, um and this is where the survey analysts are gonna get mad at me. Just a text box where folks can identify in a language that. Represents them most. Um, and and I'll be a little bit hard on the data collection. It will, like, and and I'll admit that it may affect the data quality. But I feel like it's our best bet to getting a more representative picture.
I'm gonna go with that.
I'm, and then finally, one part of the business survey I really liked were specific questions about. Engagement with the city workforce. Um, and I'd be curious for residential feedback on that as well, right? Like our residents who are calling in issues, what what their experience with the city workforce is, and that was something that. Um, I don't know if we're able to add that to the residential or if we need to, but I thought I I particularly liked that section. Um, so either way, I wanted to voice that and see if it was a an option to put it on the residential.
What what section was that? What was section number? Sorry.
Um. Oh, I didn't write that down.
What was it, four? No.
Yeah, it was four. Um, where it asks, uh, have you had contact with staff in this area and lists a couple of different areas?
I like that.
Yeah.
I like that a lot.
I'm noticing now that the business survey has a lot more free form, free format. Um, options than the community survey does, so. Um, I'd like to see some of that added into the the community survey. Um, you know, the uh, like, what are the community's strengths as a place to do business? Well, what are the community's strengths as a as a place you call home? Um, what are the community's weaknesses, et cetera? Um, I think it would be um good to add that. Uh, I I'm also noticing that there's really nothing in here about affordability and or gentrification. And I don't know how we get that in there, but I think I would like to. Have s- a section about that if we can.
It's a great idea. Hi, one other thing I noticed was absent. Is that there's no mention of the library, and I guess to me, I understand that the library is a separate entity in terms of funding. But to me, the community doesn't, I mean, they don't, it's it's a service that our community or city provides. And so I would love to see where we have like um in section one, you know. Overall quality of services, you know, or we could ask about library programs and facilities separately. Um, in here, I just, I think that would be great to know because I think our library is pretty integral to our community. Um. I also had the question about adding something about whether, you know, our, you know, how accessible people find our parks, how satisfied they are. And, you know, that would be a good place if you have the ability to input, you know, your thoughts. Um. And then, um, like I said, in section eleven, um. I would like, in addition to effectiveness of cities officials, accessibility to our officials, um. Accessibility to city staff, I think, but may, those may be answered more clearly with that specific box. That Councilmember Crossley um mentioned. Um, and then I had on the, sorry. The left, gosh, where did I, where am I here? Um, there it is, the last page, uh. Section twenty A, so I like the question asking someone if they have internet service. I was a little compute confused. About like the satisfaction question, I guess. It was, looked like it was an ad to like send people uh. An ad for a certain internet company or something. Is it that, could we phrase it as like?
No, just get rid of it. You you don't need it.
Well, I guess to me, it might be helpful to have a subset of if you don't have internet, why is it, you know, i- is it due to price or?
Yeah, that.
That that would be useful to me, like why you don't have it, but yes, I agree, questions I would get rid of, so.
You know, I agree. I think we ought to put it, if you don't have it, why, you know, um, the free form box.
Yeah, that's, that's. And then as Council, or as, sorry, Mayor Knapper noted earlier, like we had talked about putting in some, I think, some specific questions. Relating to equity and to community, so I think we must. I think the community piece, we probably will have to come up with cuz I'm not sure they're gonna. Know where to go with that. Um, so that might be a good, when we, when everyone's done sharing their comments in terms of timing, that would be a factor.
Okay, so, Mr. Mr. Traxler, next steps, cuz we got a lot of good um information. That we covered.
Next step is, I'll take Councilmember Philip's suggestion, send the link to, we'll have Laura. Condense it down and send them the link to when we started this process, ask them to go ahead and try to do a revision again. If there's some gaps there because they're they're looking for a little more input from us on particular sections, like we said, may need to happen, that's fine. But we can at least get a more refined version back to the council. We can have another work session to get it a little closer and. I think. After this next step, we'll be a lot closer to actually being able to start the process. And once you guys have the final survey complete, they're they'll be ready to roll. We'll make sure to send out, you know, social media, we'll we'll send out blast to make sure, try to get as much. You know, input and participation with the survey as possible, but. I'm gonna use Sandy's comment, that or Sandy's suggestion, that's a great idea. Saves me from typing up a long email.
That's great, thank you. All right.
Thanks for all your comments.
Before we move on, any, anything further for item number eight? Okay, uh then item number nine, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Thank you all, and thank you, community members, for joining us, and we will see y'all next week, if you join us. All right, good night.